Chris, give me that name of the award of distinction. Certificate of Distinction. Two hundred and seven. Training out with GMA. Yeah. Oh, no, I got it. I got it. It can't. It can't. Is Mr. Neal online?
He is.
Okay. We would like to say good evening to everyone and thank you all for coming out tonight for our first February, February meeting. This is, we'll now get started with our meeting. This is, we usually open up our meetings with prayer. Ask that those of you that wish not to participate in this part of our council meeting, we'll give you time now to exit out of the room. If not, we'll continue with prayer. Most gracious heavenly Father, we love you, we magnify you, we thank you, we rejoice in your name. And God, we just ask on tonight, God, that you would allow your Holy Spirit to lead this group of council, God, to do your will and not our very own, that we may be able, God, to govern, God, this city, God, according, God, to what you tell us to do, God. And God, we don't want to be in your way, God, but we want you to get in our way. And God, we just thank you now, God, open up our hearts and our minds, God, to receive everything that you would have us to receive, to govern this city, God, the way that you want us to do it. It's in your son Jesus' name that we do pray. Amen and thank God. Amen. Brings us down to number two. Let the minutes reflect that everybody's here tonight. Councilman Neal is on, is on the phone line. First of all, before we, before we get in even into the agenda, the city of Greensboro received an award for the year of 2020, and it's the Economic Placemaking Award. And this is it. Councilman Moore received this award for us from the GMA program that we, the annual GMA program that we have every, every year. Councilman Moore also received award, the Certificate of Distinction, for having two hundred, two hundred, or two hundred and seventy or more training hours with GMA. Councilman Moore has been here on the council for thirteen years. Let give Councilman Moore and the city of Greensboro a hand. Brings us down to number three on our agenda, approval of January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three regular session minutes. Counsel, I give you time to read over those minutes. If you've already read over them, let me show so by raising your right hand. Once everybody's raised their right hand, will, everybody's already read. You ready, Councilman? All right. I entertain a motion and a second to approve our regular session minutes. There's been motion and second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Councilman Neal, you say aye. All right. Unanimous decision brings us down to number four, the approval of the January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three executive session minutes. Counsel, I ask that you would pass those to your left once you have read over them. All those minutes have been passed in. I entertain a motion and a second to approve the executive session minutes for January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. It's been second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Brings us down to number five. I don't see Chief Chronic here. Chief Chronic is not here. Brings us down to number six, and Chief Chronic is not here. Ms. Sergeant Fold, the Green County Family Connection Fiscal Agent.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I don't officially have a presentation tonight, but the fiscal agent form for Green County Family Connection is up for renewal for this year, and the form is usually due on February fifteenth. So I had sent a copy, a paper copy to Ms. Map in reference to renewal of that fiscal agent form. The budget is going to remain the same at this time during the legislative session. If it, if a change comes about, I will let you all know that, but right now the budget will remain the same, which is fifty-two thousand five hundred for the entire year.
Thank you so much. How has the relationship with the city been? Have we, we given you everything that you need or do you need any more from us?
No, you all have been very supportive. Right now, the biggest thing that we're working on with Family Connection is our housing and homeless coalition, and I think you've been receiving emails inviting you all to that meeting, and we are just trying to get something done here in the county around the housing and homeless population. And so I have a new chair of that committee, and we have a lot of great organizations involved with that committee, so I'm hoping that we'll be able to get something done within the next year.
That, that meeting date, do you have that?
Uh huh. It is February the ninth at one o'clock by Zoom.
February?
Ninth, which is this Thursday. And I can resend the Zoom link if you would like me to resend that to you as well.
Yes, ma'am. Counsel, is there any questions for Ms. Fold? No questions? Thank you so much. Brings us down to number seven, Ms. Mamie Hillman.
We'll need you all to vote on it tonight. Is there any way that y'all can vote?
Yes, ma'am.
If you all to continue to be the fiscal agent.
Counsel, you heard the request coming from Ms. Fold to continue being the liaison for the Green County Family Connection. Fiscal agent for the Green County Family Agency, Connection, I'm sorry.
Second.
It's been second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Neal, say aye. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Mamie, it is now your time.
All right. I don't know whether any of you all know that our plans to honor and celebrate the original thirty-three African-Americans who were expelled because of color in eighteen sixty-eight. That's when the Capitol, Georgia Capitol was at Middletown. And our representative was Representative Abram Kobe, who was a former slave in Penfield of John Kobe, who was his biological father. So these men, these thirty-three men did not get a do-over. They were perpetrated against, they were beaten, some was killed, and their families were terrorized. It was during reconstruction, and that was a very horrific time in Georgia. So these thirty-three men came from thirty-three counties. They were officially elected. However, there were those in the legislature that thought they should not serve because they were former slaves. So they went to Middletown, to the Capitol that morning, to take their seats. And there was a meeting before the meeting. And they were expelled. And you, you men, you ladies, you stand on these men's shoulders because they were the forerunners and the active engagers of the political process in the state of Georgia. And when I say their lives were never the same, the lives of their families were never the same, a lot of their wives were sexually abused, their children, and they got out of town. But Abram Kobe was killed in a train accident coming from Atlanta. And his family ended up in, in Michigan. And so we have been fortunate enough to find his descendants. And they will be here September ninth for the tribute dinner that we are planning. But that Saturday evening, it is our hope to do a candlelight visual downtown Greensboro. Because in the history of Green County, in the history book of Green County on page four twenty-six, there were a plan to shoot him as he came downtown Greensboro. The militia was on the, the parapets of the building, the tops of the building, and if he had won the, won the election again, he was to be murdered downtown. So that's why we want the candlelight visual downtown. It will be praise songs singing, just, just to honor and celebrate him. And since eighteen sixty-eight, there has been no African-American who has successfully ran for that seat. Mr. Hudson tried, but he didn't make it. So we need to honor and celebrate those men, and I hope before March, you'll be able to drop in at the museum to see the exhibit. And we can honor and celebrate these men because they deserve it. And we are looking forward to his family coming down from New York and, and Delaware to share those moments with us because they deserve tribute. Just like someday somebody is going to be reading your historical narrative and your leadership, we need to honor and celebrate those men because, like I say, they did not, were not privileged to a do-over, and that, that's not a cutie. They were human beings. They were beloved men. They were great leaders. And it's sad what happened to them because of the heartness and the credence of men's hearts, which has not changed. And it is my hope that we gain an understanding of clarity of mind and heart and spirit and honor and celebrate those men and just honor and celebrate who we serve. Because none of us have arrived anywhere by ourselves. And so we would like to close the street from where the Korean hair store is down to Hunter Drugstore on the eighth of September. And I will get with Rodriguez and discuss this with him, and I look forward to talking to you all again about it. And thank you so much.
All right. Do you have the hours, Ms. Hill? The hours?
It will be, we're going to try to start at five-thirty because I think the courthouse stays open until five. We're going to start at five-thirty.
Until?
Until around ten. Is there ordinance around activity downtown?
You want the streets closed from five-thirty to ten? That's what you're requesting?
Five-thirty to ten. So I know that's a long ways off, and if anything, you know, we need to do, just let us know, and we'll govern ourselves accordingly. Okay. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Counsel, you heard the request coming from Ms. Hillman asking for a street closure for an event to be held downtown in Greensboro on September eighth, twenty twenty-three from the hours of five-thirty PM to ten PM. I entertain a motion to approve or deny? Second. It's been second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Hill. Brings us down to number eight, Ms. Kendrick Ward.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight to request the road closure for the twenty twenty-three Southland Jubilee. We would like to request the road closure to be, to start on Friday evening at North Main and Broad Street and come all the way down to Festival Hall. And then Saturday morning, close the road on South Main Street starting at six AM, and we'll reopen by seven. Pete, come down to the end.
Thank you so much. Counsel, you've heard the request coming from Ms. Crenshaw Ward for road closures on April fifteenth and sixteenth for Southland Jubilee. Those times again, Ms. Kendrick?
Friday evening will be after five o'clock on North Main Street, and then Saturday morning it'll be six AM.
I entertain a motion to approve or either deny the request coming from Ms. Kendrick. It's been second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you so much, Ms. Ward. Ah, thank you so much, Mr. Neal. Brings us down to number nine, Ms. Kell Hammond, Streetscape Project Overview and Approval of the Row and Lighting Agreement between the city and GDOT.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Council. So I have a couple of new documents to present to you guys related to our Streetscape project tonight, but I thought this might be a good time to just kind of take a moment and provide an overview of what exactly the Streetscape project is, the project area, the project location. As we're moving out of the preliminary design and pre-construction activities and moving actually towards right-of-way acquisition and construction, I, I thought it would be good to give the council an overview. So before we dive into the lighting agreement and the right-of-way agreement, I want to invite our prime consultant from Columbia Engineering, Mr. Randy Strunk. Randy's a civil engineer who's helped us with the design phase of the project, and he has a brief presentation for you all just about Streetscape and the project in general and some of the more technical aspects of it, and it's on the screen behind you. Randy, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Appreciate y'all allowing me to be here to present to you. So we've been working for a while on the Broad Street Streetscape project. My name is Randy Strunk. I'm the project manager. I'm with Columbia Engineering, and we were hired by the city of Greensboro a couple of years ago to be the prime consultant on the project. Kendrick, can you get the next slide? So I'm going to keep this fairly brief and fairly broad, but I'm open to answer any and all questions that y'all may have to dive into any specifics. So here's a little outline of what I'm going to go over tonight. Project team, our goals, the extents of the project, what it looks like currently, and then what we're hoping it's going to look like when it's all said and done, where we're at currently, how it's going to impact the properties out there, and then schedule moving forward and then answering questions. So the project team, obviously you, city of Greensboro, and us, we're the civil engineer on the project, doing the design on the roadway, the path, the stormwater, and the utilities out there. The project is federally funded through a TAP grant, and that TAP grant's funded or filtered through GDOT, and so GDOT and the feds pay eighty percent of the project. The city of Greensboro pays twenty percent of the project. Because it is federally funded, it has additional restrictions on it, and it has a lot of additional environmental considerations, which is why, which is something that we do to get the federal funding. And the other pieces of the team are WA Studio, who's the landscape architects, and they are the ones that make the plans actually look pretty and the ones that design and make sure that it works. Colliers Engineering and Design is the right-of-way acquisition team. So as we get into acquisition of right-of-way easements, they'll be on site. Terricon is the geotech that does the exploration of the soils, and Edworth Pittman is the environmental team that looks at the ecology on the project. All right, so the project goals, to create a pedestrian-friendly environment, make sure that both the pedestrians and the vehicles have additional safety throughout the corridor. We want to connect the businesses throughout downtown Greensboro to the pedestrians or allow pedestrians to get there and extend the Main Street aesthetic that's already out there at Main Street and Broad. We want to extend it in both directions, both east and west. And at the same time, we wanted to have minimal right-of-way impacts. We don't want to acquire additional right-of-way where we can help it. We want to minimize that and just acquire used easements, whether driveway easements, temporary easements, or permanent easements out there. And one thing, as I get into talking about this, if I use any acronyms or say anything that's kind of engineering speak, don't be afraid to stop me and say, hey, I don't understand what that means, and I'll be happy to explain or go into more detail on it because I do that a lot, just out of habit. So the project is two thousand feet long. It starts up there at Northwest Street and Green Street, and then goes south to Broad Street, and then moves to the east to tie in where the Main Street project already ends. And then on the other side of the Main Street project, it starts up again and then runs down to Salome. So the existing conditions on the project, there's a lot of areas that have no sidewalk or there's cracked sidewalk. This is in front of Ripe Thing, the picture here, and it's actually been, the concrete in front of there has been redone since then, but there's other areas in the project that also have concrete and disrepair, and it certainly doesn't look like some of the area on Main Street with the really nice hexagonal pavers and the nice Streetscape area. Now, you can see in the picture there, there's ad hoc parking throughout much of the downtown area, but especially here in front of the Ripe Thing, you've got a car parked coming towards us, and you've got a car parked behind that kind of in a different direction. And you've also got really wide roadway there. You can see the, the car that's driving to the east, even though it's only one lane in that direction, you've got about double the amount of asphalt that you would need for a typical roadway. And the existing right-of-way out there is seventy-five feet. So the goals on the project are to extend that, that Main Street and Broad Street aesthetic in both directions, and it'll, it'll match exactly that with those hexagonal pavers, a wide Streetscape. A lot of it will go out into the existing roadway because you do have additional asphalt there, and we don't want to take additional right-of-way. And so the new curb in some areas will match the existing curb with that granite look, and we'll go out in what's called a lane diet because you're actually making the lanes out there a little bit more narrow compared to what's there. The pedestrian lighting will match the pedestrian lighting that's on the Main Street and Broad Street and go in both directions to improve safety. And the same aesthetic, so we're going to be adding raised planting beds and planters in the roadway, and there'll be a lot more separation for parallel parking so that it's a lot more clear so you eliminate some of that ad hoc parking by making it clear where parallel parking is and where it stops. All right, so where we're at. We had a concept approved by GDOT on January twenty-sixth of last year, about a year ago, and we had our, what's called a preliminary field plan review on March twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. Those are both very large milestones in GDOT realm. And so since then, we've been waiting for our right-of-way authorization. That's the approval that we need to start acquiring easements and right-of-way on the project, and that's contingent on three main things, NEPRO approval, which is the environmental document, the L and D approval, which is an advertisement in the paper that the project is moving towards letting, and right-of-way approval, which is GDOT just approving the, based off those other two things going out there and acquiring the right-of-way and the right-of-way agreement being signed. So the right-of-way on the project, as since we're getting into that phase, there's fourteen parcels identified on the project. There are no displacements, no houses being taken or knocked down as a part of the project. There are two parcels that will require a right-of-way to be purchased. There's just little slivers up against the road. There are three permanent easements being proposed for continual maintenance of particular areas on the project. There's two temporary construction easements where you have to do some grading outside of the right-of-way, but won't be maintained long-term by the city. And then the remaining seven parcels are all driveway easements, just simply there to make sure the driveway ties in nice and smooth once the construction's complete. And here's the anticipated schedule, which is, we're going back and forth with GDOT right now to get concurrence on the, the upcoming schedule. I already mentioned that concept is complete, preliminary plans are complete, the right-of-way plans are complete, and so we're hoping that we can begin right-of-way acquisition next month, dependent on those three things I just mentioned. Right-of-way acquisition will take somewhere between five to seven months. There's also only fourteen parcels, and then we're, we've already started final construction plans. We're hoping to have those wrapped up mid-year. Then we'll go to final field plan review where we review the plans with GDOT and go over any comments that they have. We're hoping to have that by July. And then ideally going to letting November of this year, and we're anticipating construction time would be about a year, so that would put us ending up the, ending the project towards the end of next year. And with that, like I said, I'll keep it broad. I'd love to answer any questions that you have on specifics on the project.
Thank you so much. Is there any questions coming from the council?
I have one, Ms. Mayor.
All right, go ahead.
The right-of-way acquisition. Those portions have been dilified. How much is that going to cost?
So there has been around three, three hundred and twenty-six thousand. That's been allocated for right-of-way acquisition, but that's for the entire process. So right-of-way acquisition involves, you know, appraisers, attorneys, and the actual purchase of the property itself. So it's three hundred and twenty, I don't know the exact value, thousand, but eighty percent of that's paid by GDOT or federal funding.
Any more questions coming from the council? No more questions. Thank you so much, Ms. Kell. Thank you so much.
Yes, so, so Mr. Moore, the grant that we most recently received from GDOT, the one that you all authorized the mayor to execute the document digitally to accept the grant, that was for the right-of-way funding, and so now that we've gotten that, that's, that's a big part of us knowing that we can move forward with these activities because we have the funding from GDOT to do it. Um, okay, so I have two agreements for you guys tonight that are related to Streetscape. And I'm, I'm not sure what order they are on your agenda. Does it matter?
No.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, all right. So the first one in my stack is the lighting agreement, which is basically between the Georgia Department of Transportation and the city of Greensboro. And this is basically spelling out the terms of, you know, once the new light fixtures are installed, who owns them, who maintains them, and all of that sort of detail is worked out in this agreement. And this is, is sort of prescriptive from GDOT, so we don't have a lot of opportunity to, you know, we kind of have to take the terms that are presented to us, but if you have any questions about the specifics, this document has been reviewed by the city attorney, and he can, he can help y'all with that.
Counsel, you heard the request coming from Ms. Hammond, Streetscape Project Overview and Approval of the Row and Lighting Agreement between the city and GDOT. I entertain a motion to approve or deny? It's been second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Brings us down to number ten, Ms. Hammond, Approval of Resolution Authorizing the Application of Twenty Twenty-three Certified Local Government Grant.
Well, with permission, sir, before we move to that next agenda item, we do have a second item of business related to Streetscape. Is it okay if we stay on that for just a moment more?
Yes, ma'am. I apologize for moving so fast.
No problem. So we also have before the council tonight a contract for acquisition of right-of-way. So it's our right-of-way agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation that Randy mentioned earlier in his presentation. And basically, this agreement is just laying out that the city of Greensboro is going to go out, acquire the right-of-way needed for the project. It spells out the amount of funding that GDOT's putting into the project for Greensboro to acquire the right-of-way, and this is just laying out the terms of that agreement as the city moves forward with right-of-way acquisition for the project. And this motion, if the council so chooses to, would need to actually be authorizing Mayor Williams to execute a digital document on behalf of the city because this document will circulate via DocuSign like some of those other ones have in the past.
Counsel, you heard the request coming from Ms. Hammond. Take a motion. Counsel, you heard the request coming from Ms. Hammond. Take a motion to approve or deny?
Motion to approve.
It's been seconded. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you so much. Now we're down to number 10.
Yes, sir. So the City of Greensboro has applied for a certified local government grant in the FY 2023 cycle from the Georgia Historic Preservation Division, and we are applying for funding to continue our audio interpretive tour stations. Those are more commonly called the solar boxes that are around town, where if you press the button at certain historical sites, you can hear some audio interpretive information. We have them currently at the Greensboro Cemetery, at the Wyatt Jail, at the Rock Jail, at the Baber House, at Springfield Baptist Church. And we have another grant from a previous cycle that's under development currently, which will add solar boxes at the Episcopal Church, at the Methodist Church, and at the Greene County Courthouse. So we have that one, one completed, one in progress, and we're applying for a third. And the third grant, we are proposing to put solar boxes at the Baptist Church, the Presbyterian Church, and the post office would be the new site. So we're trying to build out that tourism product, something for people to do when they come to town, you know, to take those self-guided audio tours. So to that end, we applied for a grant in the 2023 cycle, and I had a resolution before the council tonight, basically giving your seal of approval to that grant application on behalf of the city. And that grant, if it's awarded, would be a 60-40 grant, which would mean the total, we're applying for a total project cost of around $15,000. The 60%, which would be the grant amount, would be around $9,000, and the 40% match from the city would be around $6,000. And we would make that 40% match with a match of in-kind through our staff time with a little bit of a cash match as well. So we'll log our staff hours, and that'll be in-kind towards the 40%. And then, depending on how much time we log working on the project, the city may have a cash match to make up the rest of the $6,000.
Thanks so much.
Yes.
Just for record, I want to go back. Councilman Neal, are you still online?
Yeah, I'm here. I'm here.
Okay. We want to record your vote for agenda item nine. Were you voting to approve or deny?
I couldn't really hear that, because I wasn't voting.
Okay, all right. Did you hear for item number 10?
Item 10?
Yeah, we're on item 10.
Okay, I guess.
Were you able to hear, Ms. Hammond?
No, that's not all.
Okay. We apologize for that. But counsel, you've heard the request coming from Ms. Hammond regarding a certified local government grant. I'd accept your, an emotion to approve It's been seconded. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you so much.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Neal?
Yes, sir.
All right. Ms. Hammond?
Yes, sir.
The pop-up boxes that we have throughout the community, how do we go by designating where boxes are going to be located?
Right. Well, the first criteria is they have to be located in the National Register Historic District, and Greensboro has a lot of those, but that's the first thing. The second thing is we have to have the history. So somewhere, the history has to be recorded in such a way that we can actually put together the content for the boxes. But we're always open to additional locations. We've had, initially, there was an emphasis on African-American history, because that was the programmatic kind of directive of the grant for a couple of years. They were offering bonus points, and they really wanted you to emphasize African-American history. So the Baber House and Springfield Church did that for us. The Depot has an African-American history story as well. And I believe the courthouse will too have an African-American history story, kind of in those different sites. This next round, they didn't really have any priority scoring for it, and so we are trying to go back and build out some of the locations at the churches, just because there's such an emphasis on rural church tourism. A lot of people are traveling around Georgia and looking at rural churches. And so we wanted those people, when they come to town, to have a way to kind of get some of the history about the churches in our historic downtown. And again, they had to be in a National Register District, so that was the other part of it. So that's kind of what we look at. We're always open to ideas and suggestions. The Historic Preservation Commission for Greensboro is also involved in this last round in helping us recommend potential sites. Since it was a little more open this last round, you know, the first two rounds had African-American history as an emphasis. This one didn't really have an emphasis, so we relied on the HPC to help us identify some of those sites. And they'll help us also with the content, and they will help when it comes time to actually decide where to install the box. They'll help us with that, too.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much. Next on your agenda is item number 11, Ms. Nicole Chille.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
How are you?
I'm fine. I think you should have a letter with Festival Hall logo at the top. It might have been on the bottom. It's basically, I'm requesting permission to sell beer and wine for our upcoming Jazz Legacy Project show, Cannonball Adderley preaching the gospel of jazz on February 23. We sell beer and wine to our patrons, and we receive, Festival Hall receives all the proceeds. So I'm asking permission, please.
You almost threw me for a loop there, Ms. Hammond, Ms. Nicole. I saw preaching. I was like, you selling alcohol that'll preach in the back?
Well, that's the title of, I know. You should come. Cannonball Adderley was a wonderful saxophone player, and it's gonna be a wonderful show, so I would encourage you to come.
All right. Counsel, you've heard the request coming from Ms. Nicole. I accept a motion to approve or deny.
I want you to approve.
Second. It's been second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Neal. That being said, brings us down to number 12, the first reading of orders to amend Chapter 12, Section 12, 141 Alcohol License, and adding Section 12, 153, amenity license. Our city attorney, would you like to explain? Oh, Kendra, I'm sorry. All right.
So we're starting to hear from the merchants that they are wanting to give away, like having women shopping days where they give away alcohol. And we have been looking for some kind of ordinance to allow this to happen, because it's illegal for any merchant to give away alcohol if they don't have a permit for it. So we have found a city close to us that has an amenity license, that's a non-eating establishment, that will be able to get a permit from the city, have to do a background check, and they're able to give away six ounces of beer, wine, or malt liquor, no distilled spirits during their operating hours. So this would like allow salons to give away a glass of champagne while they're, or a glass of wine while they're doing hair, or if there was like a ladies' shopping day, like a chocolate stroll, then our merchants, if they come and get a permit for it for the year, then they can give away like little tastings of wine.
Are you saying now that we have merchants that are already giving away alcohol without this being in place today?
Well, I don't know if we are, but I know other communities have.
Counsel, this is only the first reading, so we'll take a look at this closer, and we'll be ready to vote on it on our second read. All right. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, just a point to the council. Feel free to read some of the terms that are in there. If you, specific changes you want to make, that would be the time, because there are some provisions in here that this council might want to make different than what other jurisdictions have done. This is pretty close to what Madison had in place, but we thought we would give some ideas on what exactly you might want. Feel free to let me know if there's some specific change you'd like, different from what we've got before you.
All right. Thank you so much. Go ahead.
Well, this permit, if we, if y'all adopt this into the ordinance, then they can come and apply for a permit from city town, from the city hall, to be able to do this for a year. And they have to buy their alcohol outside, like they don't, they're a wholesaler, they have to buy it from retail, and that's kind of where you get around the, like, the types of people.
When you're getting your hair done, you could sit there and get six ounces, no more than six ounces per person. It's gonna be a good, thank you, Ms. Gill. Thank you so much. Brings us down to number 13, unfinished business. There is some unfinished business that we do have. Chief Moff, can you, can you come, are you prepared to give us a report? Okay.
You have your copy?
Yeah, no, I got one. You want my copy, or you? And this is just for information.
Y'all get a double dose, man. I put on a 20 of this month as well. Just an overview of, we've been talking about the purchase of new police cars for the police department. And we just wanted to shed some light on where we are, and hopefully where we can be when we get done with a brief presentation, just giving you guys some update to where we are currently and where we need to be as far as vehicles. Mayor and council, police department, fleet of vehicles over 10 years old currently. We require an extensive maintenance to stay operational in a safe manner. Our current fleet of vehicles consists of Ford interceptors and Crown Victorias. The current patrol life of these vehicles coming to its life expectancy, in which will require additional maintenance. We have replaced three transmissions in the Ford interceptors at a cost of $31.25 a car for a used transmission. Two transmissions in the Crown Victorias at a cost of $2,850. The front suspension on these vehicles have been replaced at the cost of $1,400 each. Over the last year, maintenance costs on the Ford interceptors and the Crown Victoria has exceeded $150,000. With that being said, we're in the process of phasing out these vehicles and replacing them with a fleet that would include warranties. It would help cover up the current maintenance costs incurred by the city. We have an intergovernment agreement with the Greene County Board of Education, which would cover the cost of four of the vehicles. We were entered into a master lease program with GMA for five years to purchase 12 vehicles with the Greene County Board of Education, covering the cost of four of those vehicles, eight being in the patrol division. We looked at two options: continue to maintain the current fleet as they break down at a costly repair cost, or replace the fleet, which would drop the maintenance cost dramatically and save funds. Breakdown of the vehicle, as far as the master lease agreement, it would go as follows: a monthly payment of $86,000, $20,000, but a quarterly payment of $25,863. Payment received for the vehicle that we had totaled was four vehicles, no officer at fault of these accidents, which we had, we put, saved, recouped from those vehicles $45,000 with the equipment costs, when we haven't replaced any of those vehicles. The SRO vehicles will be paid for by the Greene County Board of Education. With the intergovernment agreement, they will cover the cost of $194,188. That information that we, here, Mayor and council, wanted to, hopefully, we can get a master lease signed to be able to purchase eight vehicles for the police department and four vehicles that will be paid for by the Greene County Board of Education at that cost of $194,000.
Chief Moff?
Yes, sir.
Did I hear you say, last year, we spent $150,000 in repair costs?
Yes, sir, probably more than that. With the new lease, master lease done, we would, through GMA, they're guaranteeing us a interest rate of 3.87% on those new vehicles. And we would do those vehicles over the course of a five-year plan, making a payment every quarter. It puts us about 28 payments over the course of that, over that master lease. Any questions?
No questions. Go ahead.
Okay. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, on the interceptor, yeah. Absolute, yes, sir. About $45,000 every recruit from that. And we also, you consider that going toward that deduction of? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you, Chief Moff. Counsel, I just wanted to make sure that citizens in the council had information on why we was looking at purchasing vehicles for the City of Greensboro Police Department. Okay. All right, thank you. Councilman Ward, do you have any unfinished business?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
City manager, do you have any unfinished business?
No, sir.
City attorney, unfinished business?
Mr. Mayor, I will have two litigation matters and one personnel matter discussed in executive session.
A few?
Two litigation and one personnel matter.
Is that my personnel, or that's your, you have one personnel?
I think it's, I think it's, I think it's both.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, we will need a vote in open session if we're going to get the extra AV, a vote to accept the financing. I didn't know if we better do that today.
Is it possible we can look into this, and then he comes back up to the second meeting, we can vote then? So we can just look at it financially, because I think the first time we were looking at it, four vehicles, we added another four vehicles to it. We were kind of playing with D and I to get the four vehicles, and then we added four more to it.
Okay.
So is that possible?
Now, for clarity, we're talking of the city would purchase eight vehicles.
Yeah, so it would be four.
No, no, no. The city itself would purchase eight. The school would purchase four. So it'll be a total of 12 vehicles. City clerk, do you have anything? Councilman Miller, do you have anything? Councilwoman Rivers? Councilman Smith?
Councilman.
Councilman Neal, do you have anything?
He dropped off.
Unfinished business, I'm sorry. Basketball court, we need to put a fence. I've got several calls about kids running out after the ball, so let's make sure we get on that, city manager.
Yes, sir.
Brings us down to number 14, new business. As of right now, I can't think of any, but I will need one personnel matter in executive session. Councilman Moore?
Uh, nothing, Mr. Mayor.
City manager?
No, sir.
City attorney?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to hand to the council members before the end of the session a, um, short-term vacation rental ordinance from another jurisdiction we represent. I discussed this at the end of last meeting, um, with, um, some members of the council. Uh, I don't have it together yet for a first reading, because I wanted to get feedback from, uh, the council before, um, we present it. Uh, but I'll get that to you, same thing as, as previous. If, I wanted you to look it over, and if you have any questions about it, let me know. Um, but there has been a request, uh, from some members of the public to include this in your uses. Um, and I wanted you to see kind of how the system would work before we put something together. So I'll, I'll get you that copy before the meeting's over with. Other than that, no, no other business.
City clerk? Councilman Miller? Councilman Miller? How, yeah, he's go, we go, yeah, we go get him, yeah, yeah. Councilwoman Rivers? Councilman Smith?
No, sir.
Hey, let, let's, let's, I entertain a motion to table the master lease until next session, to our next meeting. I entertain a motion and a second to, to approve either deny that.
My motion to table?
Second. Anybody second?
I just, I guess one of that Councilman Smith, you know, gathered the, uh, the table there. Uh, Mr. Mayor, why would we want to table it? Want to get more financial input on it?
I think that was his request.
Yeah, get more financial input on it.
Okay, I'll, I'll second that. Um, and the chief comes back the second meeting in February, I believe. Guess when we're going to pick that up again?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'll second.
It's been second, any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your hand, your right hand. Time.
Well, you take the no votes.
Second.
Make sure you get your noes first.
Those are no votes? No votes.
And, and for the record, Councilman Neal has dropped from the call.
My motion is. Has dropped off. My motion is to table it. My vote is to table it until second meeting. Thank you all. Mr. Howard? Mr. Howard is coming forth to, um, tell us about the Humane Society.
Thank you for allowing me the short notice to speak. And by the way, the Jazz Legacy Program is true. We go through it. Um, we love you. So we had a meeting on January 6th with, uh, Councilman Moore and Mr. Mayor, and we discussed how we can partner, the Oconee Regional Humane Society could partner with Greensboro to improve the quality of the animals that are here, and also to curb the, I'm going to call it right now, feral community cat population, which now is called community cat population. So at that meeting, we discussed several things that we were going to do and that we were going to start immediately, which we have done. So within one month, we started working with the community cat population that you have. We started at one location, which we found that there were between 14 and 20 community cats at Moon's Grocery Store. And if you go there, then you know that there are cats running around all over the place. This program is a very intensive program, because it takes a lot of preparation to catch the cats. And we call it, it's a T N R program, trap, neuter, and release. Return, rather, sorry. Trap, neuter, and return back to the population. And we know how successful that program is when we actually catch some of the cats that have been spayed or neutered. They have a little clipping on their ear, they just take a little piece off their left ear, and that tells us that that cat is spayed or neutered. But the program, if I just take a minute of how we do this, weeks in advance, we have to work with the air, in the area, we have to identify the areas that have the problem, that have the community cats. Once we identify an area that has community cats, if there are people that are feeding the cats, we have to get them to kind of agree with us that we're going to return these animals. And secondly, we have to have them stop feeding the cats so many days in advance, so that the cats are hungry. We set traps out prior to that, so that, and put food in, in the traps, so that they get used to going into the traps. And then when we're ready to do it, the traps are set, we capture the cats. We come, we either take them back to the Humane Society, where they, we then load them onto a van, and they go to Athens, where the Athens Humane works with us in spay and neutering these cats, plus gives them rabies shots. It's important, they get rabies shots. In this case, when we did Moon's a couple of weeks ago, we set out about 10 traps. We caught seven cats that got spayed and neutered, which is really terrific. But it, but it's a big effort, because by the way, what I didn't mention is, after the cats come back that evening, we drop them off early in the morning, we pick them up that evening in Athens. We can't let, release them or return them to the community, because they're a little groggy. They could be, depending on when they were spayed or neutered. We want to observe them a little bit. We feed them, we keep them at the Humane Society, and then we bring them in the morning, and we return them to the community. We also feed them there. Well, all of that costs money. I gave you out a, a letter of what we're requesting and how we would like to partner with you. We know that there are many areas that have community cats and other issues, but community cats in the city of Greensboro. It costs about $80 in total to spay and neuter a cat. That's not necessarily the cost of the spay and neuter. That's about $45, plus another $12 for, uh, rabies shot. But there's transportation costs, there's, we have staff that has to put all this paperwork together. Um, there's food involved, vans back and forth, people have to go there several days in advance. Takes a long time, it's a long process, but it's a very, very successful program. But we're an organization that's, lives on donated funds. So we don't want to run out of donated funds, because we do a lot of other things for the city of Greensboro and other counties around here. For example, we give out in a month over 3,000 pounds of dog and cat food to families in need. We do that with Meals on Wheels, which services this area, at the Food Pantry, Second Harvest, we do it in Putnam County, and we also do it at the Putnam Christian Outreach, and then Life Source. And then we also do it in Baldwin County, where there are over 300 cars, people that are in need that come by, and we do it once a month over there. Actually, twice a month, we do it every other Tuesday. And we give out all this food to people that are in need, because if they can't feed themselves, they can't feed their animals, and that's when there is a problem. So what we're requesting from the city is to partner with us and to split some of those costs for the cats that we spay and neuter in the city of Greensboro. And they're in the areas that we, we've talked about and that we map out. In addition to that, we need help from the animal control in Greensboro. Person who's in animal control, that we also need their help, because they can help set traps and help us in this process. So that is our request.
Uh, my name is Bob Hartman, I'm, we're both on the board. Uh, just a little quick information on a kitten can be, have, become pregnant at about four months old. And one cat, female cat, can have easy, easy three litters a, a year. And the light, you know, five cats, uh, over 10 years, you're looking at 150,000, 150 cat kittens. So as long as we can spay or neuter these animals, they can live in the community. They're, they're healthier, it's a little safer for them. And by all means, it's just, uh, like Howard mentioned, they all get their rabies shots, so we don't have that hanging over our heads either. It's, it just makes common sense. The spay-neuter program is a big pro, uh, program for ORHS, and we do it throughout these two or three counties. Last year, we did almost 400 spay-neuters. Our goal this year is around 500. And these are where, these are owned animals, where people will bring their animals to us. But the community cat problem throughout the United States is, is, is a big issue. And that's where we have to partner. If you have a successful program, you're going to partner with the community you're going to work with. And that's what we're trying to do. We, it's been two years in coming, we, like Howard said, we kicked it off last month. It was pretty successful with seven cats, but we know there's a lot out there. So we definitely would like to keep this program going. And if you find it, um, within your budget to help us, that would, we greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor and council would like to thank you for what you've already done in the city of Greensboro. And we ask that you would give us, um, a little time to look over those packets and the numbers to see if there's anything that we can do to partner with you guys financially.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
At this time, I entertain a motion and a second to go into executive session for two legal matters and two personnel matters.
Second.
It's been second, any further discussion? No further discussion, all those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you so much, if you all give us just a little bit of time.